The meeting is now open.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Azusa community students, parents, staff. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We're in item 1.1. I would like to call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. Board Member Bo.
Here.
Board Member Arianez will not be here today. Board Member Greer should be here shortly. Board Clerk Benavides.
Here.
And I am present. Moving on to item 1.3, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Board Member Benavides. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bo. Any discussion? Colleagues, please face your vote. We will be doing the hand vote. Board Member Benavides?
Yes.
Board Member Bo?
Yes.
And yes for me? Moving on to item 2.1, public comment on closed session agenda items. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Nika, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, we have two hands raised on Zoom. The first is Jennifer Edick Bryant.
Okay. We can start.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board Members Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. It's such an honor for me to be here with you all this evening. Some of you may not know me. I'm Jen Edick Bryant and I'm retired from Azusa Unified School District as a Director in Ed Services Department. And I am a current member of the Board of Neighborhood Homework House. And so tonight, I'm here on their behalf. You have a topic, 3.3, this evening within your closed session agenda. And you'll be discussing a short-term lease of some facilities to Neighborhood Homework House. And I just want to encourage you to really take that under consideration for the benefit of not only Homework House, but all of Azusa's students. Neighborhood Homework House has been a longstanding partner with AUSD. Their Executive Director sat on many statewide networks and focus groups for the district when I was working there. And I know that for 27 years, they have been serving Azusa's students. And they have great dreams. We are excited about growth and the possibility for expansion and serving more students with extended learning opportunities in the community. And so I just hope that you'll consider this a new opportunity for partnership with regard to facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Jennifer Hicks. You can start now, Jennifer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, Yolanda. Good evening, I'm Jennifer Hicks. I'm also speaking on behalf of the closed session item, our proposal. And I want to echo what Jen said before me. And I should say good evening to all of you. Homework House has had, I think, a longstanding partnership with Azusa Unified dating back almost from day one in 1997. We share the same common goals of student success. And I really believe that this potential lease could open up us serving more students. We run a waitlist and we have for years. And I think having a bigger facility would help us grow and expand and shorten that waitlist. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now we have Sonia Ramirez. You can start speaking now.
Buenas tardes.
Si, dime.
Voy a hablar en español. Mira, mi nombre es Sonia Ramirez. Yo quiero platicarles un poquito acerca de mi experiencia en el programa Homework House. Yo tengo en el programa, mi familia tiene el programa desde el 2014. Tengo tres hijos. Mi hija mayor tiene 23 años y hace dos años que se graduó de la Universidad Cal State Long Beach, Cal State East Bay, Cal State. Y luego también tengo mi hijo, él ahorita todavía está estudiando. Él quiere ser ingeniero en computación. Y tengo una niña en el grado nueve y ella está aquí en Azusa High School. El programa no solamente les ayuda a los niños en tutoría, sino que les tiene más proyectos. Ellos hacen proyectos ahí, los llevan a paseos, los llevan a conocer las universidades. También a los estudiantes que van a la universidad les dan becas y tienen programas para los papás también. Ahí para los papás, no solamente tenemos clases de inglés, nos dan clases de inglés. Conocemos a diferentes papás, no solamente de la escuela donde van nuestros niños, sino de otras escuelas. Y tenemos oportunidad de crecer más con la comunidad. Y pienso que si Homework House tuviera un lugar más grande, tendría la posibilidad de ayudarle a más familias aquí en la comunidad y cambiar más vidas de los niños. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Ramirez. We don't have any more cards present. You want to translate in English for our colleagues to do an Spanish, Mr. Ortega, please?
Yes, Ms. Ramirez spoke to how beneficial Homework House has been to herself and to her family. Her kids have been successful in graduating from Cal State East Bay. As one still studying in college and one is a ninth grader at Azusa High School. She spoke to the fact that programming is not only for students, but for parents as well. And just speaking to the fact that if they had a larger facility, they would be able to serve more people. And so she just wanted to give her endorsement to tonight's closed session board agenda item.
Thank you. And Board Member Greer has been here. Just showed up, just wanted to point that out. So now we're moving on to closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM.
Board President, it looks like we have one more public comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we have Regina Arnold. You can start now, Regina.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Regina Arnold. I'm the Adult Literacy Coordinator at the Azusa City Library. And I'm right now located in the Neighborhood Homework House Conference Room. We just finished a grassroots ESL tutoring session with learners who are from the community, but also parents of students being served by Neighborhood Homework House. And if I can add to what has already been said, it is not just a program for young children. It is a community-building, life-transforming opportunity for all those who take advantage of its resources. Neighborhood Homework House has been an incredible partner with the Azusa City Library. And we find that we could not reach as many residents and community members as we do now without partnership from community organizations like Neighborhood Homework House. I too echo the same sentiment that having their home base be one of the currently vacant facilities of the Azusa Unified School District would not only enhance the opportunities to provide more services and reach more families, but also allow partners like the Azusa City Library to come in and increase the offerings that we have. Not just grassroots ESL, but our citizenship tutoring sessions, our mock interviewing sessions, our adult literacy program, and provide opportunities for those who would like to earn their high school diplomas. We have a wealth of resources and programming. And Neighborhood Homework House makes it possible for us to reach the students, parents, and residents of the Azusa Unified School District more successfully. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you very much, Regina. Thank you. No others online, Nika?
We have no others online.
Thank you. Now we will be moving on to closed session. And we will open again at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
The meeting is open and the livestream is on.
Thank you. Good evening, Azusa community students, parents, staff. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We are on moving to item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Eleanor Galvez and Summer Villa Verde, fifth grade students from Dalton Elementary School. Please come forward to the podium. Over here, young ladies. Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, young ladies. You did a great job. We're moving on to item 6.1, recognition of 2023-24 Azusa Unified School District Teacher of the Year. But I will ask Ms. Peterson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Cabinet, and all of this evening's attendees. My name is Teresa Peterson and it's my pleasure to welcome everyone to my school, Sierra High School, and the Annual Teacher of the Year Awards. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the outstanding dedication, creativity, and passion of teachers who tirelessly have gone above and beyond for our students and our school community. Like so many other schools in our district, Sierra's recognitions, like our Model Continuation School and Exemplary Program awards and the service that we provide to our students and community, would not be possible without the dedication of individuals and the entire team. Each school has their own exemplary team members that work tirelessly to make that magic happen. Each awardee tonight has been selected by their colleagues, parents, and their students for their exceptional commitment to the excellence in education and their unwavering commitment to their students. We're here to celebrate not just their individual excellence, but also their collective positive impact on their school and the Azusa Unified School District as a whole. Thank you and congratulations to each school's Teacher of the Year. And I'd like to invite our Assistant Superintendent Jorge Rancio to the podium. Thank you.
Board President Yolanda Rodriguez Peña, Board Members, Cabinet, and guests, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, we gather to celebrate something truly special. The incredible teachers who dedicate their lives to shaping our future. Each and every teacher here deserves our deepest appreciation for the countless hours that they invest, the challenges they overcome, and the magic they weave in their classrooms every day. Being a teacher is not easy. It is extremely difficult. It requires an immense amount of patience, creativity, and a genuine love for learning. They ignite young minds, nurture hidden talents, and become pillars of support and encouragement. They are more than just teachers. They are mentors, they are coaches, and they are sometimes even cheerleaders. Therefore, selecting sites Teachers of the Year is no easy task. The process begins in February where sites are asked to begin the selection process from their site's teachers. Then in March, our site Teachers of the Year submit letters of recommendation and complete questionnaires. In April, a committee of bargaining, unit representatives, administrators, and myself come together to interview and select one teacher who will be our district teacher of the year. It is a magical day, one of the best days I have all year. The day is filled with laughter, heartfelt, genuine emotion, and just an uplifting feeling that our students here in Azusa Unified School District are in very, very good hands. I want to thank our administrators for their constant support and their flexibility throughout this process. I also want to thank our HR team who coordinated this Teacher of the Year process from February through this evening. I also want to share a heartfelt thank you to our nutrition service employees who provided a wonderful, wonderful reception and delicious meals. Yes, thank you. And our MIS team for making this event possible and having this meeting here. Above all, I want to thank our Teachers of the Year who work, and all of our teachers for that matter, that work very, very hard every single day to be here tonight. So without further ado, congratulations to all of our teachers and our Teachers of the Year. I'd now like to turn it over to our principal from Dalton Elementary, Dr. Donna Martin.
Good evening. Board President, Board of Education Members, Cabinet, and Attendees. My name is Dr. Martin and I am the proud principal of Dalton Elementary. I am excited to be here this evening to announce Dalton's 2023-24 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Marisela Wezar Hernandez. Mrs. Wezar is supported tonight by her husband Sammy, her daughter Dachlin, and any minute now, her son Aiden, and our Dalton staff. Twenty-five years ago, Mrs. Wezar began her teaching career at Valleydale for two years in upper grade and as a dual-emergent teacher. And now, for the last 22 years, she has been a Dalton bobcat impacting the lives of her children and our bobcat students. First of all, Mrs. Wezar has dedicated her time and talents to many activities and committees. She has been in English learner contact and has presented at ELD and ELIC meetings. She's been a gay coordinator, a AAA elementary representative, and SST committee member. She's been involved in parent education workshops. And for many years, she's supported the financial equity of all our students through Dalton School Site Council. In the community, she has worked with APU to connect science programs on campus with tours with our Dalton students. If that's not enough, she's been instrumental in the ongoing support of her own children as well as Mariachi. And just as a side note, as I've gotten to know her, I don't miss her, I won't challenge her. She knows her stuff. Next, as part of our ongoing dedication to our students, Mrs. Wezar is a strong advocate for the education of all children and their social-emotional development. She has spent countless hours in professional development, pursuing her own personal growth, and then shares her knowledge with others all in order to support the needs of her students. Whether it's input at an SST, intensive small groups in her classroom, providing accommodations for assignments, or sending home support materials to parents, Mrs. Wezar goes above and beyond. She encourages strong partnerships between home and school by supporting students and our families by setting them up for success. Her rapport with families, students, and staff is that of knowledge and respect. Dalton is very fortunate to have Mrs. Wezar on our team. With that in mind, I would like to thank everyone this evening for the opportunity to briefly share with you Dalton's 2023-24 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Marisela Wezar Hernandez. Congratulations, Marisela.
Good evening, Board President, Board of Education Members, Cabinet, and Attendees. My name is Jeanette Flores and I am the proud principal of Hodge Elementary. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Nicole Buck, Hodge Elementary's Teacher of the Year. Accompanying Nikki tonight is her husband Jim, her kids Matthew and Sydney, and her esteemed Hodge colleagues. With 24 years of dedicated service to the Azusa Unified School District, Nikki exemplifies the qualities of an outstanding educator, mentor, and community leader. Nikki, currently a kindergarten teacher, began her teaching career in the 1999-2000 school year at Ellington Elementary. After one year, she moved to Hodge Elementary where she has been since. During her time at Hodge, Nikki has guided her youngest learners through their ABCs and 1-2-3s. Her patience and empathy allow her to understand the individual needs and emotions of each of her students in the middle of what I like to call controlled chaos while teaching a lesson. She's a kinder teacher. But that's not all. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom as she serves as a grade-level representative on the leadership team and as AEA union representative advocating for the needs of both students and educators. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Nikki has spent many years contributing to her own children's social development by participating in the Boys and Girls Scouts of America. She is practically a wilderness survival expert. She has spent countless hours selling cookies and taking on community service projects. And let's not forget her other passion, the rose parade floats. Along with her family, Nikki volunteers her time at Fiesta Floats in Irwindale where she contributes to the creation of floats for the rose parade and assists in the decorating of iconic roses that hangs over the Norton Simon. Her dedication to community service and civic engagement is truly commendable. In conclusion, Nikki is not just a teacher. She is a wilderness explorer, a floral artist, and a superhero. But above all, she is a friend to her colleagues and to every child who walks through her door. She comes to work each day with a desire to make a difference in her students' lives. And it is for these reasons that the Hodge community has selected Nikki for the recognition of Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet, and Attendees. I am Diana Rojas, the proud principal of Charles H. Lee Elementary School. And it is with great pleasure that I introduce Mrs. Ramos as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Ramos has worked for Azusa Unified and Lee Elementary School for 29 years. As a kindergarten and first-grade teacher, for many of those years, she worked as a bilingual educator. Mrs. Ramos exemplifies all the characteristics of an outstanding teacher: professional, hardworking, collaborative, compassionate, personable, flexible, and dependable. Mrs. Ramos's dedication and passion for teaching is impressive. Her number-one priority is the success of all of her students. Due to her structure and the variety of learning strategies that she incorporates in instruction, her students always thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. In addition, her teaching style and her rapport with students reflects her exceptional instruction. She is a supportive, caring, attentive, and dedicated teacher who is clear with her students about her high expectations while setting boundaries for them gently but absolutely firmly. Mrs. Ramos is admired and respected by all of her colleagues and parents for her positive classroom environment where all students feel valued, supported, and cared for. Her students' parents are grateful for the constant communication and advice that she provides them regarding their child's progress and development. Along with being an amazing teacher, Mrs. Ramos serves on our fundraising committee, Community Schools Advisory Committee, and Donuts with Someone Special event, which we'll be having pretty soon. Another recent commitment that Mrs. Ramos took on was as a volunteer coach for our lead track team. She was an essential part of our coaching team and took the initiative to purchase new jerseys for our team. So we look pretty special on that day in the rain. Let's not forget the rain. Beyond our school community, she's a longtime resident of Azusa and is actively involved within the community of Azusa and St. Francis of Rome Church. In fact, all of her children are products of Azusa's schools. They are graduates of Gladstone High School, my alma mater, yay, GHS. We will long remember you. We are truly blessed to have Mrs. Irma Ramos at our school and it is our honor to recognize her as the least Teacher of the Year for 2023-2024. Thank you, Mrs. Ramos, for all that you do. We love you.
Good evening, Board President Yolanda Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet, and Attendees. My name is Jenny Lee, Director of Early Childhood Education Programs, as well as Principal of Longfellow School. It is an honor for me to represent the Longfellow School community in recognizing and celebrating the school's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jeanette Cardenas. Ms. Cardenas is participating virtually with her family. She's also here. Please help me welcome them. For the past 10 years, Ms. Cardenas has touched countless numbers of lives and has made lasting impacts on the lives of her students and their families. Her commitment to the profession and her strong conviction in improving or providing exceptional services for all students is evident in everything that she does. Ms. Cardenas currently teaches a preschool life skill class and is very effective in working with students who come to us with very diverse needs. She seeks to understand each child's specific needs as well as their strengths and sets high, attainable expectations for all students. Ms. Cardenas's commitments extend beyond students' needs in the classroom. She is exceptional in connecting with families, building relationships, and in providing great ideas and resources that the families can use to support the students' learning at home. Ms. Cardenas is also committed to helping those on the teaching team. New staff members share that they appreciate the time that she takes to support them, to share curriculum and ideas, as well as effective teaching strategies with them. Dedicated, creative, and supportive is how the Longfellow community sees Ms. Cardenas. These characteristics are what makes her an effective teacher. She is so effective, so, so highly effective, that many of our families requested their children remain in preschool for a year, even another year, a year after year, because they want their children to stay with her because they make such tremendous growth when they're with Ms. Cardenas. Ms. Cardenas, we are very thankful for your love of the Bear Cubs and your dedication to student achievement. Congratulations on being selected as Longfellow's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Cabinet, and Attendees. I am Marcela Fonsica and it is a great honor and privilege to present to you Magnolia's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Yvonne Bowie. Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Yvonne Bowie. Yvonne is accompanied tonight by her Bowie-to-full family who graciously share her with us. I can't take credit for that, though, I got it off of their license plate. But they are indeed a beautiful family, and by extension, each is a wild Mustang because of the support they show for this amazing teacher and our school community. Mrs. Bowie has taught in the Azusa Unified School District for 26 years. Four years ago, she returned to Magnolia School eager to teach her first graders how to be, you guessed it, the wildest of Mustangs. How does one teach children to be wild, you might wonder? Well, being a teacher, Mrs. Bowie models, models, models. She is wise and makes thoughtful decisions. She is an inspiration and brings the light-up balloons to the PBIS party. She is a leader and paves the path for developing solutions to make Magnolia a wonderful place to be. Yvonne Bowie is genuine, kind, reflective, organized, and definitely a doer. She usually has most ideas done before we've even finished sharing. The heart that she has for her students is unparalleled. We have had many hallway conversations where she is beaming with pride, sharing about her students' learning. She has a gentle way of leading and inspiring her little learners and inviting their families to join the journey. I spy one of her little learners in the audience tonight. I have barely begun to share with you the many wonderful things about Mrs. Bowie, but one thing is certain: she truly deserves this special recognition. Mrs. Bowie, thank you for what you do for our school community. We are proud to have you represent our Wild Mustangs as Magnolia's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinets and Attendees. My name is Adrian Acosta and is a proud principal of Clifford D. Murray Elementary School. It is with great honor that I present to you Murray's 2023-24 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Maria Gayeta Garcia. Joining her tonight are Maria's parents, her husband Adrian, her daughter Alexandra, her sister Melissa, her nephew Joshua, and her brother Peter. It has been said that teachers have three loves: the love of learning, the love of learners, and the love of bringing the first two loves together. As a kindergarten teacher for the past 25 years, Maria Gayeta Garcia has done just that: a positive, caring person and a pleasure to have at Murray. She has impressed us with her commitment to lifelong learning and her love and craft in teaching. An example of this is her three-year commitment and implementation of the Sobrado Early Academic Language Program, also known as SEAL, providing rigorous academic language for all of her kindergarten. When she's not teaching, Maria is setting up behind-the-scenes community events on Chet's trunk-or-treat and the Halloween parade. Maria is also leader of the Murray Social Committee, who always brings cheer to our school and staff. She organizes events, lunches, and celebrations that bring a spirit of unity and happiness to our community. By the way, did you know that Maria likes giraffes? Go look at her poster. I had no idea until it was time to create her poster. It's true. But once I saw the giraffe on the poster, it made perfect sense. You see, Maria, a giraffe is very unique and one of a kind, just like you. A giraffe was born to stand out, just like you. You'll always see a giraffe standing tall wherever it's at, just like you. And a giraffe is always constantly reaching for new heights, yes, just like you. Thank you, Maria, for your dedication and for being a positive role model to the Murray community, and thank you for being a teacher that cares for and serves as a champion for our students. Ladies and gentlemen, applauding once more Mrs. Gayeta Garcia, Murray Elementary's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Antonio Flores, proud principal of Paramount Elementary, and it is my honor to introduce to you Paramount Elementary's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Gretchen Lee. As you can hear, tonight Gretchen is joined by her husband Michael and her children Sofia and Josiah and our Paramount family. Mrs. Lee has taught for 20 years, nine of those in Azusa, and she has consistently demonstrated exceptional creativity, effectiveness, and dedication in her role as a teacher at our school. Let me first start with her creativity, especially in her classroom. When you enter her classroom, you feel like you're stepping on the beach, and that's real. There are surfboards, palm trees, nets, sailboats, brilliant colors just like on her poster, and decorations that foster a sense of calmness and inspire learning. And in doing so, Gretchen creates a nurturing and inclusive environment where every student feels valued and supported. Her warm and caring demeanor fosters a sense of belonging and encourages students to take risks and strive for excellence. Second is her effectiveness, and one of Gretchen's greatest strengths is her innovative and engaging teaching style. She incorporates a variety of hands-on activities, interactive lessons, and technology tools to cater to the diverse needs and learning styles of her students. Whether she's teaching math or language arts, Gretchen's lessons are always creative, relevant, and inspiring. And finally is her dedication. Beyond her exceptional teaching skills, Mrs. Lee also is a collaborative team player who consistently goes above and beyond to support her colleagues and to contribute to the overall success of our school community. She actively shares best practices with her peers, is a teacher representative of our PTA, and this year took on the responsibility of leading our school play. Gretchen, we want to thank you for your dedication, for your passion and commitment to our Paramount community. You are an outstanding educator who exemplifies excellence in teaching and leadership, and it is my privilege to once again to announce Gretchen Lee as Paramount Elementary's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet Members and Attendees. My name is Horacio Trejo, and it is great pride that I serve as the principal of Valleydale. It is my pleasure and honor to present Valleydale's Teacher of the Year, Darren Dyer. I had a conversation with one of our directors about people who seem to have everyone and everything following them just like Snow White, and I can confidently say that Darren has become the Snow White of Valleydale. Her journey to get here and become her Snow White was a bit unique. She was at Gladstone Street, and then it closed, and then she was at Ellington, and then Ellington closed. Now she's at Valleydale. First, I'm hoping that we don't close, but second, we hope that we have her for years to come. Now, during a visit to Ellington, I had the opportunity to observe her in classroom in action, and she was engaged in a butterfly activity with TK students. Now, anyone who has witnessed a group of four-year-olds together knows that it can be quite the lively scene. Yet in Darren's classroom, there was a sense of enchantment so palpable that I half expected a musical number to burst forth with butterflies and children harmonizing song. And I immediately told her principal, like, "Ellington was blessed to have her, and wherever she would end up, it would be lucky to have her," and that turned out to be us. Now, though, this is only her second year at Valleydale, Darren's influence and impact was immediate. She, like, dove into our school events, committees, and became a staunch advocate for all of our Vikings. When confronted with the challenge, she was always ready to lend a hand, offering solutions with both common sense and an infectious positivity. I was also having a conversation with the teacher, and she was telling me that she had asked Miss Dyer, "What did she do to keep a certain unique Viking on task?" Darren told her that this angel of a student paid attention to the paddle. Now, before everyone panics, the paddle has visuals on it that helps direct students to the appropriate next-step action. So the paddle in the hands of her Snow White became like a wand to a magical being. So, thank you, Darren, for bringing your warmth, heart, and magic to our community. With you around, no matter the challenges we face, we are reminded that everything will indeed be all right.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Gable Fernandez, principal at Azusa High School, and it is my pleasure and honor to honor Yessen Yamota as Azusa High School's Teacher of the Year. Tonight, she's here with some of her colleagues from Azusa High School, as well as her two children, David and Daniel, and her spouse, so we especially love to say this in front of her children. As a teacher in the World Language Department at Azusa High School, she has demonstrated a commitment to both students who are learning Spanish for the first time and to students who grew up speaking Spanish at home. She approaches all of her students with respect and professionalism. Her work ethic and dedication to her craft inspire her colleagues within the department. She's been an outstanding educator for over 10 years in Azusa, getting her start at Gladstone High School, working with her colleague online, Ms. Martinez, to build a pathway for success for students to pass AP Spanish exams and earn the state seal of bilinguism. She has maintained a high passage rate of over 96% year after year for the AP exam. Her classroom is always an inviting place to visit, and students are always engaged in rich conversation and the types of activities that will help them build fluency in Spanish. Her care for her room environment and the positive attitude that she displays to all of her students is an asset to Azusa High School. As a teacher and colleague, Ms. Yamota has been a great inspiration. The World Language Department has undergone a great deal of change with a new book, new boards in the classrooms, new thermostat, new classrooms. It's been a lot. But she's been flexible and patient, and as the new department has come together and is willing to make the adjustments to her teaching practice as necessary. She believes in continuous improvement so much, not only did she earn a degree in the United States, she also earned a degree from the University of Salamanca in Espana. She is exactly the type of teacher that a parent of a high-school-age student would want. She is patient and empathetic with all of her students. She makes the calls to parents in response to communication in a timely manner. She relates well to everyone. She shares in their passions, and the students always feel respected by her. She champions those that need her the most and always seeks the opportunities to love and care for them. She knows the benefits of mentorship and modeling the positive traits we all expect to see in our students at Azusa. She loves kids so much, she even churches them, teaches them at church as well. In short, Ms. Yamota is the type of teacher we believe in in Azusa. With her steadfast faith in a better tomorrow for all of our students, working with her dedicated peers in her department, the sky is the limit at Azusa High School. Once again, please join me in congratulating Ms. Yamota as Azusa High School's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Anthony Contreras, and I am the principal at the Azusa Adult Education Center. It is with great pleasure I get to introduce and talk a little bit about Nos Maestra Mariosa, Mrs. Cynthia Ontiveros. Tonight, Cynthia is joined by members of her family and several colleagues and students. I'm saying, where are the students at? They were crowding to get in the door over there, but there they are, see? All here to join and celebrate Ms. Ontiveros. Mrs. Ontiveros has taught for over 30 years in adult education. She found a passion for the adult learner and has never looked back. Currently, Cynthia is our ESL Coordinator, ESL Teacher, leads our Career Center, Spanish High Set Teacher, Citizenship Interviewer, WASC Team Member, AFA President, and is on our leadership team. She is always willing to represent adult education in our community to share the opportunities available to adults. She is a continuous advocate for students in addition to helping them share their voice. Mrs. Ontiveros's kind and welcoming personality is inviting to her students and staff. She motivates her students daily and encourages them not to only learn English but set goals for the years to come. Through EL Civics class, she connects literacy to the lives of the learners and reflects their experiences as community members and parents with an emphasis on participating in the workforce. She thrives in connecting students with their civic potential. Students are not only learning English but learning to become the best community member they can. The adult learners in the city of Azusa are lucky to have an advocate, instructor, and mentor in Mrs. Ontiveros. Please join me in congratulating the Azusa Adult Education Center's 2024 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Cynthia Ontiveros.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Superintendent Ortega and Cabinet. My name is Erin Kramer, and I'm the Director of Special Education. I am privileged to have the opportunity to introduce Steven Biswano as Teacher of the Year from the district office. Mr. Biswano is joined by his mother, Sarah Biswano, this evening, and many staff members who have come to support him. Our district is incredibly fortunate to have teachers on special assignments, known as Team TOSA. Steven works as an important and special part of Team TOSA. Special because he supports his role, he supports all areas in his role as special education TOSA, and important because he partners with the TOSAs to ensure their projects include special education perspectives to support access for all of our students' unique needs. Steven is described by many as one of the most genuine, kind, intelligent, professional, supportive people you will ever know. I have had the privilege of working with Steven for many years and can attest to that. Steven shared his thoughts on ensuring students achieve their full potential. He said, "When a student feels they are somewhere safe and cared for, they perform beyond any of their expectations. In order for us to help guide our students to achieve their full potential, we must first show them that we truly care about them. We are here to help them discover their dreams and provide them with the skills and tools they will need to achieve those dreams. We must show them their dreams are our dreams." I deeply appreciate how Steven's words and actions remind us of why we do the work we do and that every day, our students are the reason that we come to Azusa Unified. When asked to When asked to work on a project or partner with someone, Steven often responds by saying, "It would be my pleasure." Steven, it is my pleasure to speak about you this evening. Congratulations on this recognition. It is very much deserved.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez Peña, Board Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Ryan Ward. I am a Special Education Coordinator for Azusa Unified. It has been my privilege to work with and oversee the Special Education Resource Center Teacher of the Year, Mary DePasse. Mary is joined by many, many of our team members and her daughter. Mary is an Orientation and Mobility Itinerant for the program for the visually impaired, servicing Azusa Unified and the neighboring school districts within our Selva. Mary is a strong advocate for her students, always volunteering for team projects or committees to help advance students with visual impairments. Being a member of the Task Force for relocating our students with visual impairments to Azusa High School in 2022, Mary was able to work with and educate many staff members on the accessibility the campus has to offer. Providing recommendations such as installing new Braille signage, raised paint for swinging doors, and strengthening the implementation of the expanded core curriculum for our VI students was just a few of the many ways Mary helps on a regular basis. Her colleagues provided many wonderful words of support for Mary's nomination, stating that Mary goes the extra mile to ensure her students have the equipment that they need and the support that they require to succeed. Mary is an amazing coworker and mentor. Always stepping up to do what is needed, her dedication can never be questioned. Mary, I have always and truly enjoyed working with you. I appreciate your dedication, teamwork, and passion you show for our students. Congratulations on being the Special Education Resource Center Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Cabinet, our awardees, and the attendees of the evening. My name is Teresa Peterson and as always, I'm the proud Principal of Sierra High School. Tonight, I'm proud to honor a true pillar of Sierra with our Teacher of the Year, Socorro Melgoza. He may not be here tonight, but I'm sure at least one of his three daughters will make sure he sees tonight's awards. Though he may not prefer, though he may prefer to avoid the spotlight altogether, Melgoza's commitment extends beyond the classroom, touching every aspect of our school. He's taught us the values of discipline and respect, influencing countless students and setting a standard of excellence. For anyone who spent any time here at Sierra, Melgoza's impact is clear. It resonates in every achievement we celebrate and in every challenge that we overcome. In the words of one of his favorite coaches of all time, John Wooden, "Nothing will work unless you do." And Melgoza is a doer. His work does not end when the bell rings. He has been a mentor during and after school hours, always available to lend an ear, give advice, or share a word of encouragement. I won't say exactly how many years because I may hear it tomorrow, but for decades, he's poured his heart, resources, and dedication into enriching the lives of our students and strengthening our entire school community. Congratulations on being Sierra's Teacher of the Year. We thank you for your unwavering dedication and for the countless contributions you've made to our Sierra High School. Thank you.
And now I have the distinct honor of announcing our 2023-2024 District Teacher of the Year. She is a genuine champion for our students and staff and we are very proud and excited to announce that Griselda Berry from Gladstone Middle School is our 2023-2024 District Teacher of the Year. Now, let's just say a few words about Ms. Berry as her principal, Mr. Perdomo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ronquio. More than a few words, actually. I apologize I have to put on my glasses, not trying to look cool. It's just, these are my prescriptions. I forgot my others at home, so. It's not light in here, but we'll manage. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Sam Perdomo and I am the proud Principal of Gladstone Middle School. It gives me great pleasure again to announce and present Griselda Berry as this year's Azusa Unified District Teacher of the Year. Joining Griselda tonight is her husband Trent, her daughter Janelle, her son Andrew, along with her mom Melissa, stepdad Ben, and Tia Cecilia. Almost 10 years ago, Dr. Kaminsky and the AUSD Board of Education graciously gave me the opportunity to be the principal at Foothill Middle School. Before starting in my new position, I reached out to Corey James, the HR Assistant Soup at the time, to give me the names of at least four or five teachers that would assist me with the Foothill culture and make certain that I didn't start out stepping on toes like I normally do. Of course, Griselda was one of those teachers. She was the Social Studies teacher at the time. Since then, it's been an amazing experience working with her at both FMS and now at GMS because she truly goes above and beyond. I knew Griselda was a rock star from the get-go and she has not missed a beat since then with respect to school involvement, teaching practices and strategies, and most importantly, caring for our students and staff. Let me begin with school involvement. At the time, I'm sorry, at the time I began leading the FMS team, we had many new and current initiatives on campus. Griselda was instrumental in establishing the Foothill PBIS Initiative, including the very first FMS PBIS store. Some of you I hear from Foothill who helped as well, so. In fact, the PBIS matrix that GMS follows now was taken from one that Griselda helped to develop. Griselda also took on Kelly Reed and passed on her knowledge to the FMS staff and it has now carried over to the GMS staff where once a month she leads a team of GMS teachers. These are just a couple of examples of initiatives that Griselda has taken on where the school culture has improved. Griselda worked hard, even during her off-contract time, to make certain that the details for any staff presentation were readily in place. I recall getting emails from her after work or on weekends because she wanted to make certain that this was, that what she was presenting was thorough and accurate. So I'm going to begin with my first fun fact with initiatives. We had something called March Madness over at FMS. It carried over to GMS. And this year, guess which homeroom won, March Madness? You guessed it, Texas Tech homeroom, right here, Griselda Berry's homeroom. They took home the championship trophy. Now, let's talk about Griselda's teaching practices and strategies. The district has three success drivers: cognitive rigor, collaborative practices, and academic discourse. Griselda follows this each and every day. That is, when you walk into Griselda's classroom, you will see a welcoming environment, students seated in groups of four, working with one another, talking to one another about the topic, and utilizing strategies that forces them to think beyond the low-level questioning. In fact, when the superintendent or the district director is accompanied by a classroom visits, I'm sure to take them into Griselda's classroom because I know the students will be engaged in learning. Moreover, when I asked our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Norma Camacho, to guess who the GMS Teacher of the Year was, she immediately guessed right when I gave her the following hint. What classroom can you walk into and see the students thoroughly engaged in a lesson and the teacher directing them with that lesson? You got it. She guessed right. Griselda Berry. In regard to caring for students, Griselda really goes above and beyond the classroom setting. That is, I can't think of a time when Griselda missed an after-school SST, IEP, or 504 for any one of her students. I'm telling you, this is truth. If she missed, I would think something was wrong. I know why this is the case because she truly cares. For example, in those meetings of Nita, Griselda always volunteers to take that student, no matter how difficult that student is. She takes her under her wing by offering before-school and lunch tutoring. Sometimes it could just be having a safe place where they can play board games during lunch. Griselda is truly the student whisperer because she can take on the most difficult student and have that student listen to her and get the work done. If you know Griselda, she has that calm and soothing but firm voice that just lulls the student into submission. You know Griselda moonlights as a hypnotist. No joke, no joke. In all seriousness, Griselda, she has, I'm sorry, I lost my place. In all seriousness, Griselda just has a caring heart. As you may or may not know, a little over a week ago, we tragically lost one of our AUSD students. This was one of Griselda's former FMS students who was struggling with discipline and grades. While at FMS, Griselda was involved with getting this young man on track and in the right direction. Last week, GMS put together a donation collection over $2,000 and Griselda, along with her family members, collected a good amount of the money and a good amount of money to assist the family with their tragic loss. That was amazing. This caring demeanor extends to the staff side. That is, Griselda is always involved with assisting in staff celebrations and losses. I recall during COVID lockdowns and other more recent times when my family had difficulties, Griselda would bring to our home remedies and her world-famous empanadas. My mom is from Ecuador and makes the most amazing empanadas and I will tell you that Griselda's empanadas give my mother's empanadas a run for their money. However, I would never, ever tell my mother that. Whenever there is a long-term substitute, a new hired teacher for social studies, Griselda always assists them with content and grading. Griselda would utilize her planning time to assist without hesitation in steering new teachers in the right direction with respect to curriculum and grades. Finally, Griselda is one of the best, if not the best, teacher I've ever worked with on any staff. The beauty about this is I have gained a friend, a colleague, a thought partner, a go-to person, and last but not least, a Netflix buddy. Fun fact, Griselda and I are staunch Netflix watchers and we have consistently recommended shows to one another for the past several years. And the one now is Baby Reindeer. You gotta watch it. Anyway, I can go on and on, but it's her night. Please welcome me in congratulating Griselda Berry for this much-deserved honor as Azusa Unified School District Teacher of the Year.
That was wonderful, Mr. Perdomo. Thank you very much. Before we turn the mic over to Ms. Berry, we do have some partners in the community that want to honor Ms. Berry. So first, can I have Carla Cardenas join me up at the podium representing the Office of Senator Susan Rubio's office to present Ms. Berry with a special recognition from the Senator's office.
Good evening, Board President, Members, Cabinet and Attendees. My name is Carla Cardenas. I'm here on behalf of California State Senator Susan Rubio. Thrilled to be able to honor all of the Teachers of the Year this year at Azusa Unified School District. Thank you for having me here today. While Senator Rubio was unable to attend tonight's event, as a former educator herself for 17 years, she is committed to advocating for the needs of our educators and ensuring that every teacher has the support and resources necessary to thrive. Your tireless dedication to the success of your students is a testament to your unwavering commitment to the noble profession of teaching. Your impact extends beyond the walls of the classrooms and Senator Rubio is honored to celebrate your accomplishments. So on behalf of the California State Senate, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Azusa Unified School District's 2024 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Griselda Berry. Congratulations to you and all of the honored members.
And now I'd like to welcome Melissa Alcantar from Foothill Credit Union to present Ms. Berry with an award.
Good evening, Board President, Cabinet, Board Members and Attendees. On behalf of Foothill Credit Union, I am so proud to be here tonight to support our continued partnership with the amazing district. I'm so happy that we could be more than financial support, but also be here on a day like today. Today, you feel inspired and you really feel the talent and heart of the district. So with that being said, I'm proud to present a $100 check to Azusa's 2024 Teacher of the Year, Griselda Berry.
And lastly, I would like to welcome Shawna Kerligan from Schools First Credit Union to present Ms. Berry with an award. But before I ask Ms. Shawna to present, I want to formally thank our friends at Schools First Credit Union for sharing 10 tickets to Friday's May 10th Angel Baseball Game. The tickets will be shared with Ms. Berry as well as our Classified Employee of the Year and our Parent of the Year. So thank you Schools First for helping us recognize this year's AUSD's All-Stars. Ms. Kerligan?
Good evening, Board of Education President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Members, Cabinet, all of the site's Teachers of the Year, all of the amazing family here, all of the amazing friends, yes! Give it up for yourselves! So I am Shawna. I am proudly representing Schools First Federal Credit Union and on behalf of Schools First, this is a token of our appreciation for all that you do. He listed all of the stuff. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the store Tarjay. This is a $100 Target gift card. I said, "Thank you for all that you do."
Ms. Berry, you are welcome to say a couple words.
Thank you Foothill Federal Credit Union and Schools First. That was unexpected and really appreciated. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Cabinet and Attendees. Congratulations to my fellow colleagues on your well-deserved nomination. Congratulations to my fellow colleagues on your well-deserved nomination. I'm honored to work alongside many dedicated people in this district. Thank you to the interview panel for this recognition, and to Arturo and Cabinet members for celebrating us this evening. I'm very grateful for my longtime friends and my family who are here tonight. I'd like to thank every single person that works with me at Gladstone Middle School. I'm honored to be on this journey with such a caring group of people. Thank you, Sam, Althea, and Gus, for your passion in helping Gladstone succeed. A very special thank you to my family, Trent, Janelle, and Andrew. Your constant love and support means everything to me. Love you guys. I'll never forget the day the district surprised me with the award. Thirty minutes before they arrived, I was in the library making copies. Lorena Ellis, our Community Schools representative, approached me to touch base about one of our struggling students. When I realized who she wanted to talk about, I told her, "Oh, she needs a lot of love." Lorena looked at me and asked if she could give me a hug. She said the comment reminded her of my mother-in-law, Sharon Berry. I realize now that Sherry wanted to congratulate me before I received the award. Thank you, Lorena, for remembering her legacy of kindness and for helping me feel her presence through your embrace. This year has brought the greatest challenges of my career. Our world has changed so much, and at times, the violence and upheaval we see in our society and within our own community doesn't make any sense. Being a teacher during these times has become exceptionally difficult. But there was a time when the world seemed simpler. For me, it was the 80s. My hair was much taller. It was burned to a crisp, and I had gone through many Aqua Net hairsprays. It was also the time I met my beautiful husband, Trent, and it was the time I was a student in this district. It was also a time when I walked on this campus, and it was a decade when I memorized the lyrics to hundreds of fantastic songs. As a teenager, it felt like the world just wanted to party like it's 1999. And as vividly as I recall those lyrics, I also remember my mother's sage advice: "Estudia mucho, haz algo con tu vida." "Study hard and do something with your life." I understood why that mattered to her, because she once told me that she loved going to school. Unfortunately, she wasn't given the chance to continue past 6th grade. Her teacher tried to convince my grandfather that she had excellent potential, but my grandfather didn't understand the value and denied her the opportunity. But God is good, and through her sacrifices, doors were opened for me to educate thousands of students. So I dedicate this recognition to God and all our family members who were denied the opportunity to receive an education. Mom, doy gracias por tus sacrificios y por las bendiciones de Dios. Él abrió las puertas para que yo pudiera educar a miles. Dedico este reconocimiento a Dios y a todos los miembros de nuestra familia, a quienes se les negó la oportunidad de recibir una educación. I'd like to share a story that connects with something I value as an educator. It happened the day we returned from spring break. I asked my students to share how they spent their time off. "I played video games, and I was on my phone," were the most common responses. As the students became excited talking about the latest video games, I tried my best to smile and seem interested. But deep down, I was cringing and desperately wanted to ask if anyone had completed at least one of their missing assignments. In the middle of the chatter, one of my students, named Julian Garcia, bravely asked, "I was just curious, did anyone read a good book over the break? Because I did, and it was quite amazing." The whole class went silent and must have wondered if Julian suffered a concussion over the break. Julian and I looked at each other and immediately broke into laughter. Of course Julian read over the break. I knew he was an avid reader from day one. He can articulate his thoughts using rich vocabulary. He loves engaging in philosophical discussions, and most recently, he entertained us as Willy Wonka in the school play, where he read every line like he was performing on Broadway. It's clear Julian's love of reading was instilled at an early age by his elementary teachers and his supportive parents. Sadly, we know Julian's passion for reading isn't the norm. In fact, our country is facing a literacy crisis. Last year, the National Assessment of Education Progress reported that only 43% of 4th grade students can read at a proficient level. And for marginalized students, the numbers are even worse. When students arrive at the secondary level, reading far below basic, it can feel overwhelming both for students and teachers alike. However, we can't give up on our students regardless of these gaps. We need to take proactive steps at the secondary level to address this situation. During a five-year span, the district gave us a valuable opportunity to learn research-based strategies that can support struggling adolescent readers. I was fortunate to work with several dedicated teachers and Dr. Lowry, who is here today. Thank you for coming, where are you? There you are, thank you. Under the Cali Reads Initiative, although the funding for this initiative has ended, our shared responsibility to learn these strategies and incorporate them into our lesson is just the beginning. I look forward to collaborating with others as we strive to ensure all students can find joy in reading, just like Julian. We definitely live in a time when things often don't make sense, and teaching is harder than it's ever been. Our students haven't been as fortunate to live in a decade when life was less complicated. For now, all we can do is help them feel safe, loved, and supported. And maybe, just maybe, we can teach them what it was like to live in the 80s. Thank you.
Now I'd like to return it back to Board President Rodriguez Pena.
Do any Board members have any comments? Board Member Greer?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to each of the teachers who are recognized today as Teachers of the Year for their respective school sites. And Ms. Berry, to you, congratulations as District Teacher of the Year. It's just an incredible thing, also as a product of this district, as one who was a student in these very classrooms, being taught by some of these very teachers, just how grateful I am to see the ways that the work continues. So just want to say thank you to you all. We do this thing where we honor one Teacher of the Year at each school site, but the truth is, we could honor so many more. So to all of our educators out there, just want to say thank you for all that you do.
Board Member Benavides?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I want to say congratulations to Griselda Berry for being honored with Teacher of the Year for 2024. I share with you the 80s, and I can relate to your Aqua Net hairspray days. Definitely, those were better times, it just seemed that way. But that being said, I want to also extend a congratulations to all the teachers that were recognized. And just like Board Member Greer said, you know, the teachers are... All the teachers should be here tonight, right? And we should be congratulating them, because these are different times. And teachers are... I see teachers are the extension of the board. They are setting the standards of excellence for us. So I really want to say that every year we come here and we, you know, we listen to all the presentations and all the stories about the teachers, and I just envy the group that has to do that. I'm glad I don't have to do that, because I would want everyone to be Teacher of the Year, every year. But I do want to say thank you for loving and investing in our students. That means so much to me. Thank you again, and congratulations to everyone here.
Board Member Bo?
Good evening, Azusa educators. As a parent, more importantly, not as a board member, but as a district parent, I'd like to extend my deepest appreciation and thanks, not only to Mrs. Berry, but to all of our Teacher of the Year honorees and to all of our Azusa educators. As educators, you make an indelible mark on the lives of our children. You offer safety and care, you inspire and you encourage, and you push and you persevere, and for that, we thank you today and every day. Thank you.
And I would like to thank the community for taking the time to come out and celebrate our amazing teachers. All our teachers should be Teachers of the Year. I'm very proud of all the teachers, my children and all my grandchildren. Well, I have four children, four grandchildren, and they attended Azusa schools, and they all had one teacher or the other that keeps coming up here. And I totally agree, because they were in their class, and I seen the teachers, how hard it is. But I do know this, at this time, it's even harder, as I've seen things have changed. I myself retired 40 years in my school district, and it's different. The children are different, and I really appreciate everyone taking their time and having patience. You need corazón, and you need patience these days, and I know that everyone is doing just that. This is why your colleagues have selected you. Next year, well, the district I came from, they only had one Teacher of the Year, just one. When I came to Azusa Unified, I was so happy that there's one from at least each school site. They had one classified employee, believe it or not. I worked there 40 years, I was never the classified employee, and I know I was a good worker too. But, you know, I'm just saying. So I think it's beautiful, it's beautiful to recognize everyone and giving everyone the opportunity to be recognized, because I believe a certificate, a few kind words, it goes a long ways. It brings the morale to our district, you know, it brings closeness and morale. And I do appreciate all that, of all the teachers dedicating their time here at Azusa Unified School District for our beautiful children. And also, Griselda Berry, congratulations to you for spending your time at Futo Middle School. So you were in the junior high, Futo Middle School, and Gladstone Middle School, and I know that's a very hard grade. I know that for a fact, because I was in the junior high for 40 years, and I'm still alive to talk about it, right? So congratulations to you, and I'm very proud. And I'm so happy that you're all at Azusa Unified School District. I also want to thank Mr. Assistant Superintendent Tronquillo and his secretary, Iwan Murillo, and their staff in the Nutrition Services for doing such a great job and making such a beautiful event every year. Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a short recess to take a group photo. If all the awardees please come forward and allow the attendance who wish to leave the opportunity to leave before we resume our meeting. and allow the attendants who wish to leave the opportunity to leave before we resume our meeting. And can we recall the board members to come forward and the honorees to to take a group photo, please?
Okay, we're going to be moving on to item seven point one, public comment and agenda and non-agenda items. The Board of Education encourages public's input. Board members are not permitted to respond to public comment. A member of the staff will staff will contact you if information is needed. Thank you for your participation. Individual speakers, individual participants in public comment must adhere to following guidelines. Speaker cards must be turned in to board secretary or raise their hand while in Zoom attendance by seven ten P M or ten minutes after the board meeting begins. No speakers may yield their time to another individual speaker. Speakers must be present when their name is called in order to be heard. Maximum speaker's time is three minutes. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Yes, we have one blue card. Laura Butanda, please come to the podium. You can speak at the mic, Laura? Yes, please. Yeah, there, yes.
Hello, my name is Laura Butanda. I work at Lee School. When I arrived there this fiscal school year, I was devastated. Forty-five minutes a day. You cannot live off of forty-five minutes a day. I've been begging people, begging and begging, trying to get through. I don't know if it's my age, you're discriminating against me, what? I started this district January twenty-six nineteen ninety in this school district. And I'm really devastated that Jorge Ranquillo can't meet up with me. He's always at a meeting. I went to Hope Neer and asked her if Mr. Art Ortega could meet up with me, and she gave me back to Jorge Ranquillo. I have no problem talking to these people, but I mean, from a four-and-a-half-hour person down to forty-five minutes a day, trust me, I've hurt. Very much so. And I just want to know what was the purpose of this? What what's the explanation that I come back and I only get forty-five minutes a day? I've asked Mrs. Rojas at Lee School, can you give me extra hours? No, but all the other noon aides get extra hours. I see it. I have to thumb through a notebook and I see where somebody's got a few extra hours and stuff, but me, I never get them. I'm not able to keep up with Mr. Jorge Ranquillo. On the day that I noticed that he did call me back was one time at five twenty-nine at night. Before I left for a babysitting job just to make twenty extra dollars that day, I left a message with one of the girls, Joanne. I said, please, if he does call me, have him call me tomorrow because I really need to go on this babysitting job. And this babysitting job exists of a seventeen-year-old and eighteen-year-old disabled kids that I'm able to get along with and babysit that don't live far from my house. So I would like some answers on why I'm only given forty-five minutes a day. I feel like, is it age? Is it like, you know, what happened? What happened here? I feel very misused and abused. And I see the other girls, you know, getting all these hours and times. You try living off of forty-five minutes a day and and you'll learn, you know, that you have to go to welfare for the rest of your money and stuff like that. So I've managed to to get hold of some extra babysitting jobs and things like that, but, you know.
I'm sorry, Laura, your time is up.
My time is up.
Yes, thank you.
I hope I can get answers. Thank all of you. Thank you, board and committee.
Thank you. Lica, do we have any hands raised raised on Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to item eight point one, comments and reports and requests by the Board of Education. Board member Bo.
Thank you, Board President. Just like for two brief comments. Since our last board meeting, I've had the privilege of visiting Valleydale, Gladstone Middle School, and Longfellow. I was also able to attend the Willy Wonka show at Gladstone as well as stop by the City of Azusa Library sixty-fifth anniversary. And on a more somber note, I just want to share with our team here as well as our our district staff that I am very proud of the work that we are doing to provide counseling and emotional support to our families and staff who have experienced trauma and loss in these recent days. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
Board member Greer.
I have no comments this evening.
Board member Benavides.
Yes, I just want to extend my congratulations again to all the teachers that got awarded here tonight. And I did have a chance to attend the college-headed and mighty proud event last week. And it was a nice ceremony. Lee Elementary and Valleydale students were being recognized. And I always feel that that's a great opportunity for students because it really shows that they could move forward and what it kind of trains them on what success is and how to achieve it and get to the finish line. So I appreciate all the hard work and APU and staff who puts that together. Thank you.
And I would like to announce that I went to Sierra High School. Their awards ceremony, students received awards for academic achievement, student excellence, citizenship, perfect attendance. Over fifty students received an award. I'm so proud of all these students. I feel that it is important that we recognize our students when they are showing progress. I went to Gladstone Middle School, the Willy Wonka play. Wow, that's all I got to say is wow. Students from grades six, seventh, eighth participated. They did all did a fantastic job. Dancing, singing, memorizing their their skit. One of my favorite scenes was the Oompa Loompa that wanted the green hair. Teacher, I want to thank the teacher director, and she's new to our district, Callie. If I say her name right, Chacoca? And the students and the backstage crew for the fantastic job they did. I went to the all-district concert. An evening filled with chorus, jazz band, the chamber orchestra, advanced band, advanced chorus. They all played together for the first time. Every year they do that, and for some reason, they come together perfect. They always seem to work together well. They performed The Lion King. The Lion Sleeps Tonight. You got a friend, Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. I also want to thank the band directors, Mary Turner, Michael Botran, Callie Geico, Douglas McKinnon, and for a beautiful evening. I went to the track meet, the Gladstone Middle School. We went on their campus, the track meet, Rain or Shine. The show must go on. It drizzled on and off, but to the students, it didn't seem like it was raining at all. The hair was wet, but they were running around and they were having a great time. Parents all had their umbrellas out there. And I want to congratulate all the students that participated in also the park and recreation for their partnership in the City of Azusa. I went to the Azusa Adult Schools, their Community Job Resource Fair. It had a great turnout and opportunities for transportation, business, healthcare, HVAC, just to name a few. They were recruiting people right on the spot for jobs also. So I want to thank Dr. Podreras and Consular Daniel Soriano and the staff for the great job that they do. And elementary school and a middle school to the open houses. I always enjoy participating and going to the classrooms and looking at the students' work that they post on their bulletin board. If that's what you still call them, right, bulletin boards? Okay, so it's really nice. I had the opportunity to go to the Pomona Fairplex CTE course for welding. I was so happy to see what a great program that is Azusa Unified School has prepared our students, another pathway for our students for their future. My grandson was taking welding at this time at the Tri-Community Center. He pays tuition, pays for his books, pays for his tooth, pays for his jacket, over a thousand dollars, and these students are going for free. There was, you know, young man and young ladies working together. I want to thank Sierra High School Principal Ms. Peterson, Director of College and Career Pathway, Frank Chung, ROP, Director of Education, Richard Hernandez, for giving me the opportunity to visit. It it has to be after school on Tuesday or Thursdays, but it was a really great field trip for myself. APU check graduation. I'm always proud of the fourth-grade students from Valley and Valleydale and Lee Elementary. And I want to thank Dr. Flores, APU, for their partnership. And of course, always enjoy the entertainment for the mariachi de Azusa, our own mariachi de Azusa. The Golden Days Committee, I just have announcement. I'm the committee chair for as a board member on the Golden Days Committee. And the Golden Days Week is going to begin October eleventh through Sunday, October twentieth. Also, much after much discussion, the twenty twenty-four Golden Days theme will be All That Glitters in Golden, a celebration of the roaring, the nineteen twenties, the roaring nineteen twenties. The committee would like all the schools to participate if they can because the schools participated last year and they said that they did a great job and they had a great turnout. City of Azusa, also, I'm also in the committee for the City of Azusa Two Plus Two Quarter, we week quarterly. We discuss temporary locations for Azusa Library. And we're still interested in having SRO at at Sierra High School. And contract was strategic. Minister Superintendent Ortega spoke to them about what strategic was, which we will be, we will be hearing about it later. And also spoke to them about saving the date for the plaque ceremony for the the plaques for Azusa High and Gladstone Middle School. In closing, I'd like to close in memory of Aldo Ramirez, the student that passed away when was Azusa High School. Thank you.
And now we're moving on to item nine point one, comments and reports and student board members, superintendent and cabinet.
Thank you, Board President. Rodriguez Peña. Lica, is Emily with us tonight?
Yes, she is.
Emily, would you like to go, please?
Good evening, cabinet members and AUST families alike. I will begin this report by saying that Azusa High School is so proud of our spring sports team and their hard work during the spring season. AHS has added a new swim team and boys volleyball team this year. And it is such a joy to see our student athletes participating in so many different sports. We would like to specifically recognize our Montview five outstanding seniors who will be honored at the Lee banquet next month. Congratulations to Jonathan Rutter, Monique Medina, Juan Carlos Dennis, Brian Ramirez Gonzalez, and Ruby Ontario. Azusa High School is also proud of our career pathway students who have won and leadership competitions recently. We would like to recognize the following medical academy students who performed very well and were recognized in national HOSA competitions in Anaheim over the spring break. Congratulations to Valeria Ruiz, Elizabeth Castillo, Arlette Torres, Allison Cardozo, J D Ontaveros, Danielle Hernandez, Hector Hernandez, Alan Ramirez, Ethan Garcia, Hannah Jimenez, Jacqueline Santana, Amber Marquez, Charlotte Olivaaga, Audrey Garcia, Ethan Garcia, Riley Villegas, Elena Acquire, Guadalupe Garcia, Alyssa Aldama, Manuel Adamello, and Melody Lagula. Furthermore, we would like to recognize the following students for their performance in the State Skills USA Engineering Competition. Congratulations to Brian Ramirez Gonzalez, Brian Pacheco, and Lucas Jackson. On the note of accomplished Azusa students, Azusa High would like to highlight the student union members who have been hard at work developing our community at Azusa High School. Before spring break, we conducted empathy interviews to help the school understand the experiences of freshman students on campus, and we're following up with more listening session with tenth graders very soon. Furthermore, AHS students are leaning into a new role by mentoring sixth-grade students at Gladstone Middle School to help them build positive relationships and strategies for success in school starting young. It is also important to mark your calendars because Azusa High School Community Schools is hosting a cumbia night for Azusa families at Memorial Park on May third from five P M to eight P M. The dance is free, but the food will be a separate cost. It is going to be a great night for families to come together and create and celebrate our community. Additionally, Azusa is very proud of our Best Buddies Club for they were named the Grand Marshal at the California Best Buddies Friendship Walk, which took place on April sixth at Long Beach. We are so proud of our students, especially the club president, Suahedi Lopez, for their hard work towards building a culture of inclusion and meaningful connections for every student. And lastly, Azusa High's Next Coffee with the Principal will be on May second, twenty twenty-four at nine A M. We will be hosting community circles with parents and inviting our school partners to discuss new ways to build a safer, better community together. Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Mariah?
Good evening, board members, superintendent Ortega, and cabinet. As always, it's a pleasure to be here representing Sierra High School. Since the last meeting, I am proud to announce that Sierra was recognized as an exemplary program by the CCEA+ for our AP programs in alternative education. The exemplary program award is only awarded to the very best model continuation schools that go above and beyond in creating innovative in creating innovative programs. I am taking AP government and having had the chance to be able to take an AP class at Sierra is an opportunity I am beyond grateful to have gotten because these programs really help further challenge the minds of these amazing students. These awards are a great recognition for Sierra and our district as a whole and confirm what I experience every day as a proud Sierra student. We had our trimester two awards ceremony where students were recognized for their achievements in different areas like academics, attendance, and GPA. Justin Ayala was awarded junior of the trimester and Brian Viviano was awarded senior of the trimester. I'm extremely proud of both of them and everyone else who is recognized for their accomplishments. Our volleyball season and last sport of the school year ended last week with our final game against San Antonio High School. It was so fun to be able to participate in some healthy competition with my fellow schoolmates. I have enjoyed participating in the sports program throughout the year and I'm happy for future Sierra students to be able to participate in the sports program for years to come. After dedicated service to Sierra students and always going above and beyond, Mr. Margozzo was chosen as Sierra's Teacher of the Year. We are grateful to have gotten the opportunity to have him as a teacher and get to know and learn from him. He has made such a great impact on mine and many other Sierra students' lives. Last Thursday, we had a great turnout for our back to school slash report card night, which included a resource fair this year. We had tables and representatives from Citrus, multiple branches of the Armed Forces, Head Start, Los Angeles County Office of Education's Immigration Services, Regional Occupational Program, our own Sierra Community Schools team and Sierra Leadership Tables, Raising Canes, and more. In addition to all the activities for the evening, we also had our annual graduation information meeting. It was a great event and I was very happy to see students accompanied by their parents and families. As the end of the school year is approaching, seniors are preparing for graduation and senior activities. I am excited for the coming weeks and looking forward to graduation soon in front of my family, friends, and Sierra staff that have left an everlasting impact on my life, a positive impact that will help me take the next steps into my future. Thank you and go Sierra.
Thank you, Mariah. I would like to start off by congratulating all of the teachers of the year tonight. What a wonderful event to be able to celebrate, to listen, to learn, and to Griselda. She's an amazing teacher and super well deserved for this recognition. So congratulations to all of our teachers of the year. Speaking of teachers, I want to give a congratulations to the following teachers for submitting an application and winning a mini grant from the Azusa Leaders for Learning Foundation. Christine Ramirez, fourth grade teacher from Paramount Elementary School, who submitted an application to do a special activity around the California Gold Rush. To Lorena Abdupalomo, a kinder teacher from Paramount Elementary, who is going to be introducing STEM projects to her kindergarten students. Alicia Hernandez, a first and second combo class teacher from Valleydale Elementary School, who is going to be giving students three books to call their own so that they can have something to read over the summer. And then to Monique Baca, our success coach teacher at Murray Elementary School, who is going to be using her grant for a photography club. And so congratulations to those four teachers and thank you to the Azusa Leaders for Learning Foundation for always thinking about our students and our teachers. We had the opportunity to go and surprise the teachers yesterday in their environment, in their classrooms, and it was a nice day to be able to do that. Lastly, I want to share that both Azusa High School and Glaston Middle School, as Board President Rodriguez mentioned, will be having plaques installed to commemorate the history, the process, and the openings of those schools. The plaques will be unveiled as ceremonies that will take place on May 14th at 3:00 PM for GMS and May 23rd at 4:00 PM for Azusa High School. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd also like to echo the congratulations to all of our teachers of the year and just take the opportunity to thank all of our teachers for the work that they do with our students on a daily basis. I also would like to extend a congratulations to our fourth graders from Lee School and Valleydale for successfully completing the CHAMP program in partnership with Azusa Pacific University. It's always fun to hear the careers that they see in their future. And finally, just recognize our cohort two, second and third grade SEAL teachers for completing their six SEAL modules.
Good evening, all. I too would like to echo congratulations to all those that were nominated and won Teacher of the Year. And also just want to announce that we are preparing for open enrollment. That's for all of our active and retiring employees to make benefit selection and changes. And so that will be coming up this June and closing this August. And we're going to do a better job of doing save the dates and reminders. And so this is our first, so get ready.
And I also want to continue within the parade of congratulations to our toy honorees. And again, thank the Board of Education for making it a priority to recognize our outstanding employees. It's always truly amazing to be able to be a part of that. I was also able to attend the district concert and having grown up playing an instrument, I was just amazed, absolutely amazed by just the talent of our students musically and just the priority that we play some music as a district. So that was very fun. I was also able to attend several open houses. I went to Lee's, Paramount's, and Valleydale's open house. And the work that the students produce and the content-rich classrooms that our teachers have on display is just absolutely stunning. And just a note, the food is really good at all these different schools as well. And lastly, I'm happy to report that the HR team continues to move our efforts forward. On March 27th, our HR team participated in the Adult School Job Fair that took place just right here in the parking lot. And later this week, our HR team will be attending Citrus College's Job Fair. And then next week, we'll be attending Mount Sax's Job Fair. So really trying to put Azusa out there and really trying to recruit for our positions that we really want to fill. So thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to item 10.1, approval of the consent calendar. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Greer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavides. Any discussion? Student board preferential vote?
Yes.
Colleagues, can we please place our vote? Motion passes. Motion passes four and one absent, please. When we went on to item 12.1, presentation of Azusa Unified School District Homework and Tutoring Support.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Superintendent and Cabinet. Tonight, I will be briefly sharing with you some of the homework supports and tutoring supports that are available to our students in the Azusa Unified School District. First of all, I would like to share our free paper tutoring that is available to all of our students in Azusa Unified. Paper tutoring is an online platform that is available to students 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Help is offered in multiple languages, mainly English, French, Mandarin, and Spanish. Additionally, students who are taking a foreign language class or a world language class can also receive support in those languages as well. Paper tutoring offers various supports in all content areas as well as providing students feedback on any written work essays. And they've also supported students in providing feedback for college entrance essays. And so paper tutoring is available to all of our students for free. And this is our fourth year with paper tutoring. Additionally, many of our teachers utilize paper tutoring during their instructional time to pull small groups and provide small learning groups through the use of the live tutors.
Excuse me, Mrs. Camacho, can we ask if anyone has any questions regarding paper tutoring? The question I have is, so what does it look like? Is it a video that they're looking at? Or someone said they look like live people, right?
They are. They are live tutors. So you can log in to the platform and a live tutor will come up and initiate a support opportunity through a live chat. We also have homework support daily through our Think Together program. Think Together is available for all of our students TK through 12th grade. In addition to the homework help, part of the Think Together curriculum is providing daily academic support time. And they provide students enrichment opportunities in addition to reading support and math support. We also-
Okay, thank you.
We also partner with the Azusa City Library. The Azusa City Library offers free homework help for our students at the elementary grades. And the Azusa Reads and Writes and Counts program is available for kindergarten through fifth grade students. It's available Monday through Thursdays and students are allowed three or two 30-minute sessions per week. And that is an in-person opportunity and they are available after school.
And how are the students selected or the-
So any parent or family member, older brother, sister, and uncle can take them to the library and they sign them up there for their session. They indicate what they would like their, what their student would like support with. And they provide support, the tutors are students with Azusa Pacific University. We also have a partnership, well, not a partnership, a contract with HeyTutors. The HeyTutors are available to our elementary students. And the HeyTutors are live and in-person people who come into our schools five days per week for approximately two hours per day. Each elementary school has two tutors that work with students depending on needs. Some schools have a focus on language arts, some have a focus on mathematics. Sometimes it's individual reading support, but that is available during the school day. And that is in partnership with the site administration and the leadership teams at each of our school sites. And other tutoring supports that we have available, our avid students have avid tutors that provide support to them throughout their school day. And we also have various partnerships with Azusa Pacific University that support students in our elementary program as well as our secondary school sites through Azusa Calculates, Federal Work Study Program. They have tutors that come in to some of our school sites and support in various content areas from science to math to reading to writing. Questions?
Any questions? Yes, Board Member Benavides.
And so when the ones for the HeyTutor and the other tutoring supports, like for the avid, and they're in the school, do they, do the teachers designate who they're going to tutor, who needs more tutoring, so they assign them?
That's correct. The students who might need some additional supports are recommended by teachers or the resource teachers or the administration.
Any further questions? So my question to you is, HeyTutors, who are these people? You said people, who are they?
So HeyTutor is an organization and they contract tutors to the school district. They provide support in all of the academic areas. So depending on what the needs of the students are, they are funded through the SR funds that we have received, SR3 specifically, and HeyTutor provides high leverage tutoring. They have some different options. They can come into the school and partner and provide support in an existing need. They also have their own curriculum that they can provide as well. So they are flexible and amenable to whatever it is that we would like them to do. They provide the training to the tutors and the tutors are trained to provide SEL supports to the students that they work with.
I just have one last question. So how are the students and the parents aware that this is offered here at Azusa Unified School District? How do we let them know that?
We have been sharing the different options for tutoring and support. I personally, through our Superintendent Roundtable, I take every opportunity that I can. Our principals share during parent coffees, sometimes our community liaisons connect parents with resources. Often, parents will come to our community liaisons and ask for assistance. So all of the resources are shared through them as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, so thank you very much, Ms. Camacho. We're moving on to 12.3, approval of Azusa Unified School District Elementary History, Social Science Textbook Adoption. Do I have a motion?
Board President, we're on 12.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you very much. Moving on to 12.2, review the third quarter Williams Uniform Complaint Report. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, we're moving on to item 12.3, approval of Azusa Unified School District Elementary History, Social Science Textbook Adoption. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Greer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavides. Any discussion? Students' preferential vote?
Yes.
Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes four and one absent. We're moving on to item 13.1, presentation of surplus property update timeline. Mr. Ortega, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President. As we made a commitment to make sure that we are bringing an update to the Board of Education at every board meeting tonight, since our last board meeting, we did hold our board meeting. We did have a discussion in closed session. That night, we did have a public hearing on our waivers and all of the resolutions on the waivers were adopted on that evening. On April 9th, the waiver requests were submitted to the State Board of Education. And then on April 10th, our consultants, DCG Strategies, our legal firm, F3, and our district team met. It's the first meeting of several to go over draft RFPs and timelines associated with the RFPs. Again, that was just the initial pre-meeting. And so those are the three action items that have happened between the last board meeting and this board meeting.
Does anyone have any questions, any of my colleagues regarding the timeline? Thank you, Mr. Mall. I know you did this beautiful timeline. Did you? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Teague.
Actually, Mr. Mall didn't like the colors. I didn't like the colors I was using.
Oh, my gosh. So moving on to thirteen point two, Discussion and Approval of Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Four Board Meeting Calendar. Mr. Teague, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President. We have, we are bringing this item because on June eighteenth, which is our last board meeting of this school year. We have four board members that cannot attend that evening. And therefore, we are looking to schedule the meeting at an alternate date. We're going to open it up for discussion. We did throw out two alternatives. And in chronological order, those would be having a second board meeting the week of June tenth, so June eleventh and June thirteenth. Or to bump the June eighteenth meeting one week forward to June twenty fifth. But Board President, I'll turn it over back to you to have a discussion on which date or an alternate date work better and then approve that. Thank you.
So any of my colleagues have any preference on any of these dates?
I can just speak for myself and say that I would not, I would certainly not be available on, we said the week of the twenty fifth, I would not be available. I may be able to be available on the thirteenth, but I'm not one hundred percent certain on that at this point.
And does anyone have any preference? Any other colleagues? So that's the twenty fifth or the thirteenth? June?
That is correct.
June, right, Mr. Teague?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm available both days, so I'm not sure how your calendar looks for you, Ms. Benavides. Yes, I'm open either day. Okay, I am too. You're too. So whatever day you think fits, Mr. Teague, for the board to have. You know, because we're having so many board meetings and what's the best time for you to work on the agenda would be fine then.
Sure. If the board wishes, since we know for a fact that Board Member Greer cannot be here June twentieth, I'm sorry, June twenty fifth, but possibly the thirteenth, should we aim for the thirteenth?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
June thirteenth.
And if you can just call for a vote, Board President?
Do I have a motion? To, so we can meet on June the thirteenth? For a board meeting, an additional board meeting? Well, not an additional, I'm sorry, in lieu of the June eighteenth that we are not able to participate.
I move that we adjust our board meeting calendar from June, for the meeting on June eighteenth to be moved to June thirteenth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, first by Board Member Greer, second by Board Member Bo. Place our vote. Motion passes four and one absent. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, so the students preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. We're moving on to item thirteen point three, Approval Resolution Twenty Three dash Twenty Four dash Twenty Four to Order by Annual Government Board Election. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Board Member Greer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavides. Any discussion? Student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, place your vote, please. Motion passes four and one absent. Moving on to item fourteen point one, Approval Contract Between Azusa Unified School District and Synthetic. This is an info item, info slash action item. Mr. Mall, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Board President Yolanda Rodriguez-Pena. I believe we have Ken from Synthetics Online who will be doing a brief presentation of the application. So, Mr. Ken, if you can share your screen.
Thank you so much. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Terrific. Thanks for having been this evening. I'm honored to be here with the board and the cabinet. Let me share my screen. Thank you so much. I'm Ken Nunes. I'm the Western Regional Director for Synthetic. I'm based out of the Sacramento area and work with many clients here in California and been honored to work with your staff over the past six or so months in designing this solution that you're going to see today. So Synthetic is the leading provider of rapid response alert technology. And we're going to give you a short overview of what that means. We're in over twelve thousand five hundred schools across America. Over seven hundred and ninety thousand badges, just like the one you see here, are in use by teachers, aides, counselors, all sorts of folks at all sorts of districts and schools all around the country. And where people start using us, they really love us. So we tend to start to work in a state and become really popular. So we started working in California about a year and a half ago, but we've been around for over five years. And we are the leading provider of rapid response throughout the country. And our tool, the primary tool that we provide is a very simple and easy to use wearable badge that all staff can use. It empowers staff to be able to request help directly by clicking a badge. It has a depressible button that actually clicks and it will buzz a little haptic feedback similar to what you get on your phone. And if you feel that feedback, you know that message got through. And it works anywhere on campus, works in the classroom, works in the hallway, works in the bathroom, in the gym, in the parking lot, in the ball field, works everywhere. Beautiful thing is it doesn't use Wi-Fi and it doesn't use cellular. So it actually has a five-year battery inside of it. So staff does not have to worry about charging it or making sure that they're logged in. It's working all the time for them and it's there for all emergencies, both lockdown scenarios as well as everyday emergencies such as seizures or students fighting or somebody just feeling uncomfortable and needing some backup. The badge has two distinct functions. And this button allows you to execute both of those discreetly and quickly. You can ask for help just within the campus discreetly, not setting off any alarms, not calling the police, but just discreetly to your safety support staff that supports you by clicking three times. You're going to feel a little buzz on the badge and your support staff is going to be summoned and I'll show you how that looks here in a moment. Now, if you do have a lockdown scenario such as an active shooter or some other scenario that you need to lock that school down immediately, this will allow you to do that. You can push eight times or more. You're going to feel a series of buzzes. You can even just keep pushing. We say keep clicking until alarms are tripping because that is how quickly things are going to happen. That's going to allow you to quickly lock down the school and I'll go through that scenario and show you what happens when that goes. So first, we're going to start with the staff alert. This is a typical alert that's just within the campus. Like I mentioned before, this is not locking down the school. Let me make sure I'm sharing my audio so you guys can hear a little bit about how their work, how their sound as well. So what happens when somebody clicks that badge is it's going to hit one of our sensors. And we provide sensors throughout the whole school. And these sensors don't require Wi-Fi and they don't require cellular, so they're highly reliable. And they're going to show your response team on campus. So that might be a principal, it could be an SRO, it could be the other folks that are part of that safety team on campus, a map of exactly where you are. That's going to come to them in two ways. It's going to come to them on their phone as an Amber Alert and it can come to their computer as a desktop takeover. So you could be in the middle of a spreadsheet and it's going to pop up for you. It's going to say who's in dress, where they are. It's going to tell you where they are and it's going to show you in a live map of where they are. It's gonna do a click here. Staff Alert is transformational because it allows you to get instant response. And it's going to tell the staff that you, where you are anywhere on campus, not just if you're in a classroom, but anywhere on campus. And it makes it so that notification is instant and easy to see. The other things that we provide with this is we're going to help your team map safety assets that might be pertinent for certain situations. And these safety assets for a staff alert, maybe if a child needs a bleed kit or if a staff member had a cardiac arrest, you need to know where an ADD device. The maps also show you the location of those. And it'll show the immediate vicinity and you can also look at all assets throughout the entire complex. So this is a nice added feature that allows folks to be able to bring support directly to those who need it. So we're going to talk about campus-wide lockdowns. So this is the eight-button click. This is when you do want alarms, you do want notifications going out. So when you click eight times or more, you're saying, I want to lock this school down right now. And this is really a change of capability because we designed the system to be able to do this so fast that you can prevent folks from getting into areas that they're not supposed to because of the, all of the latest philosophies have shown that you need to lock your doors as soon as possible and follow all the protocols and get out of sight, all of the other steps that you're supposed to execute. Do that faster than you can manually is so important. Because instead of having to call up to the front and explain and talk and and over a phone or a cell phone, create chaos, you're going to be able to lock down a school in three to five seconds. So what happens in a lockdown is you're going to have an immediate visual alert. We provide strobes for every single classroom as well as the hallways. These strobes are also helping us track where the badges are, so they have dual purpose and are very efficient. They're also battery operated, so they're easy to deploy and easy to monitor. And we monitor all of the strobes and all of the beacons as part of our service. So the visual alert's going to execute. The other thing that we provide as part of our service is we're going to integrate to your PA systems at every school. We have special devices to do this for older systems. Newer systems, we can do this digitally. But it's going to be able to announce the specific instructions for the specific type of lockdown that you're having at that site. Critical to getting that information out to as many people, if not all people, both staff and student of exactly what to do. As well as part of that audio, we also provide visual instructions. So we'll work with your IT department to execute a desktop takeover software. And this is where we take over the screens of the staff as well as other visual displays at the schools to display instructions. So you're getting the audio and the visual instructions during lockdowns. And then finally, if there, if this particular type of lockdown requires a first responder, we also have, will be working to build an integration to them. So we'll be able to electronically notify them as well as share critical information with them. Such as location.
Lockdown, lockdown. Lock the doors, stay away from the windows.
So this is an example of a prescriptive lockdown audio and visual display. And this will be customized for Azusa for your protocols for all the different lockdown scenarios that you have. When a lockdown situation happens, we're also providing the maps and the notifications to your lockdown teams and to your district teams that are going to be involved. So this is everyone from your SROs to your safety teams, to your leadership, to anybody who needs to know exactly what is going on immediately. They're going to be able to see multiple, if multiple people are dressed, they're going to be able to see them on these command screens as well. Both the campus as well as the district have complete control of the lockdowns. They can control turning them on, turning them off. They can also change the lockdowns to subsets that are specific to the type of lockdown that's happening. Could be a shelter in place where maybe the police have notified you of some bad guys that are in the area and you need to lock down your school, but you don't need to tell everybody that there's somebody on campus. Two other things such as medical hold-in place as well as all clear. We recommend color coding all of these particular scenarios because we can match the colors not only on this command center that's used by your staff, but also all the strobes have multiple colors, so it could flash red for a full lockdown. It could flash yellow for a lock-in. It could flash green for an all-clear. And the respective messages, the corresponding messages that go with that will play on the PA system as well. Really powerful to share this with your local law enforcement. We have the capability to use the standard E911s and Rapid 911 systems to send them electronic alerts. But we recommend and we often get the law enforcement allowing us to be able to share our maps with them, which shows exactly where the activity is happening. We digitize your maps for all schools, the floor plans to scale, and we superimpose them over a Google Earth-type map. So the local law enforcement as well as yourselves will be able to see access points, roads, other things. It also does multiple levels. So if you do have schools that have multiple stories, it handles that as well. And it knows whether you're on floor two or floor three. Last part I'll leave with here is one thing that kind of comes with using our system is we are closing alerts. So when an administrator at a school is closing a staff alert for maybe a kid that had a broken leg that needed some EMS help or if it's a fortunate lockdown scenario, your administrators, they're going to automatically be asked questions to close those alerts. So when they're saying, I'm done with this alert, turn off the alarms, or I'm done with this alert, turn off the staff alert. These questions are customizable by you and it's automatically tracking data. It's tracking data on what type of incident as well as you can have it tracked really what the resolution of an incident was as well. We're automatically tracking this and give you access to this at the district level to make important resource as well as decisions on your safety strategies. This is some real-life data from one of my clients for an annual data. You'll notice that most of the data are real-life incidents that happen to all of us, happen to our students. Less than one percent are actual life-threatening or campus-threatening incidents. And that's very typical. We see generally between one to four percent, depending on where folks are located. But you can see here, it really is an impactful system for helping each and every school as well as the district manage all the types of incidents and de-escalate situations before they maybe bubble up to where it's become something you need to get a first responder. So it's a very impactful system for getting folks rapid response, getting them back to school, back to learning so to help save and protect your learning time. So thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues, have any questions?
Board Member Bo.
Hi, my question is around the badge itself. Does the badge, did you say that the badge buzzes or vibrates? So that if I'm pressed, I'm a teacher in a classroom and I'm pressing it three times or I'm pressing it eight times, how do I know that it's working?
Good question. So it does buzz. So if it buzzed, it worked. If it didn't buzz, it didn't work. And that's how we train to it. So sometimes when it's very stressful situation, somebody may go, oh, I don't know if it worked. We also train, go ahead and hit it again, hit it three times. Our system is not going to get confused or cause any issue if you have to take click three times again because you either forgot or maybe you didn't feel the buzz. But it's a pretty tangible feel, so most people do feel it.
Is the badge meant to be worn on a lanyard on your body?
That's optimal. It can be also in a pouch and clipped. Some people put it in their pocket. We recommend the lanyard because it's easily accessible. So it is always with you. The key to this system working and why it's so impactful is the fact that it's always available. We have higher reliability, that it's the highest in industry, that it always works. And if you have it with you, you can get help. But if it's in your desk, it's in your car, you're not going to get help.
Uh this is a question both for you, um Ken, and also our staff. Um have there been? I I'm guessing nationwide, there have been incidents where a teacher may leave her badge on her table or desk. And a student picks it up and starts pressing it. What what does that look like? I guess from a a district or school perspective.
Yeah, this incident could happen. It's generally very, very rare because it's. The the students are gonna know what it is as well, and you're gonna be training them to the audio and visual. And also to be going to uh to uh to uh staff and asking them to push a button, which has happened many, many times. So there's gonna be an education for them, so they're gonna know what it is very quickly. But if that does happen, uh what's gonna happen is that's gonna set off an alert and uh. You're it's gonna say the name of that person's badge, so it's gonna say Ken Noon's teacher Ken Noon's badge in. This room or if they took it off to the ball field, it's where it is. So. You're gonna have to r- resolve that. It's very rare, though. Uh you can also, as soon as a teacher loses a badge, you can deactivate it. So typically, we have a policy of if you misplace your badge, just tell us, we'll give you a new one and we'll deactivate your badge. Even if it's just a, you know, giving us a call at the front desk. We provide each and every. Front office for every school with the ability to administer badges. So we will give enough badges for all staff, including uh substitute teachers, if you like, as well, which we highly recommend. And then we give ten percent extra because we know people are gonna lose them. We know that a few are kind of broken. They're quite durable, but uh that way. The staff at the front can quickly. Give somebody else a new badge and deactivate that badge if it's lost or broken.
And just my final question is, um. What's the physical range of the badge? So I. How far away can I be if I'm way out on the? The next field or at the end of the football field? Is there a a a distance, a limitation?
There is physical distance limitation, but our service provides uh coverage for the entire perimeter of your facility of of your campus. So it'll work everywhere on on campus up to uh the edge of of the boundaries of the campus. So it it'll actually work a little bit, you know, beyond that, but we don't guarantee that. But uh just to give you some general guidance, it goes about a thousand feet, the badge. It can go forward farther, but it it uh in general, that's kind of. The way we do it. So just to to kind of uh give you some context. We're providing the sensors and we're mapping those sensors to the the entire campus. And those sensors uh are monitored by us. So we're when when we first install it, we test the whole perimeter to make sure that the badge works everywhere. And then we're monitoring at all times that that badges are working as well as the sensors are working as well as the strobes. As well as the uh P A system connections. So that they're always up and running so that when you do have an emergency, we also provide redundancy. So everything is battery backed up. And we also provide internet redundancy. Uh if your internet does go down, that is our primary mechanism for our system to talk to our monitoring system and also for it to. Communicate to your police department. But if that goes down or the power goes down, we have backups for both. We have cellular failover. So we provide cellular, well, three cellular providers and have those connections up and running at all times.
What number Benabides? I have a few questions. Um you said the battery lifespan was five years?
Mm hmm.
And um other than one not um knowing it's not working, is there a way to monitor those the?
Yeah, so we do monitor. Uh so if one uh if a. If it gets to an area of battery life that we recommend it to be swapped out. Well, the it'll we'll notify you. It's a daily report. That uh or dashboard that says, hey, these are the ones that you need to swap out soon. Uh and the way that's executed is you just. Tell us, you know, you need more, say you need five more or ten more, uh we ship those to you. We're also gonna do a uh. A recommended, once it hits like four and a half years, you're gonna be scheduled for a complete swap out. And that's case will provide you with all new badges or 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 batteries to replace the current badges. Typically, my we've just been shipping the badges with the batteries in them because it's most mostly convenient. And then you ship the old ones back to us.
Okay, and then can you please remind me, I think you said that if. You're a teacher, you and there's um like a lockdown, you're gonna be alerted on your desktop. Will you let's say you're not in front of your desktop, but you're out, you know, maybe. Going to another classroom. Is it also gonna be shown on your cellphone or uh? Can you remind me of that, how that works?
Sure, actually I have a little slide here because it's a pretty common question we get. Whoops. So just remind on a lockdown. Um you push the badge. And if the lockdown also could be executed by uh a principal or an S R O, you know, it 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 might be locked down for other reasons. But if it's initiated by a staff member, uh it's gonna again do those visual cues, so we're gonna have those. That those we provide those strokes and we're also providing the auditory. So we're connected to the P A system. So hopefully the teacher hears the P A system instructions as well. Uh I don't. From what I've you've been talking with your, you guys have P A's in every class. Now, if they're outside. Or something like that, you you you're gonna have to have other visual and audio just, you know, it uh opportunities there. We do connect to your. To all of staff computers. We do not connect to the personal cell phones of the teachers. Now, you can. The teacher could opt to download the app and be involved as as part of the safety team to receive these, but that's completely optional. Because we have had challenges and and others that challenges throughout the country who are trying to use. Cell phones as a tool for teachers and other staff to be as a primary tool for safety communication. It's now you're getting into areas of privacy, tracking. Unions are not necessarily very uh excited about that as well. So that's, we solve a lot of that by. Giving folks a badge that does not have any personal information is not, you know, they don't have to buy. It's not their cellphone, right? It's not there. So. You can have teachers use their cellphone, but it's not part of a standard thing that we provide. You can opt, they can opt if you'd like them to be able to use our, we do have an app that allows them to to view this as well, so.
And then finally, what is um the success rate that you've seen with schools that have implemented? On sent ticks. As part of the their program.
Our sense, it's it's kind of weird. I've been in K twelve for twenty years and uh mostly on the H R payroll side. And we even have self-service app. It's an H R and payroll that most people won't download. This is is ninety nine point nine percent adoption. Uh our customer base, uh we have over four thousand customers now. We have one that's left. And it was before they even installed. So they they needed a complete installation. They left. So that's one out of a four thousand. So uh we're highly successful. Uh some of the statistics I showed you on earlier. We're in eighty percent of the schools in Nevada now. Uh we just started selling Nevada about two years ago. California, we just started about a year and a half ago. Uh and. Georgia, uh we have eighty percent of schools. Florida, we have forty two percent of the schools. We're gonna have about sixty percent pretty soon. In Texas, uh we have about twenty two percent of the schools. So and there it just is growing like crazy. So. It's just, it's it's this is the, this is the iPhone of. Rapid response, like if people left BlackBerries for iPhones, this this people are leaving. Uh using your your wall phone and using a radio and using uh an app. To using a badge um that's not connected to Wi-Fi. So because Wi-Fi is a nightmare for your I T to maintain, so we we take that burden off, right? Because we we provide our own network. That is much more reliable.
Thank you. What number Greg?
We'll do a few questions as well. You had mentioned that there that there's a a map, maybe it's here mapping alert with resources.
Mm hmm.
Just that I can understand if I if I I'm an administrator. And somebody has an alert and requests for some some assistance. Are you saying that I get a map that tells me not only where the person is, but it also tells me resources around it and also for clarity? I don't know what the 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 request for support is. I just know that there is a request for support in that area, correct?
Right, if it's a staff alert. That's just a a localized campus, not a lockdown scenario. So it that's the three clicks. You're gonna receive uh. An alert if you're. Responder at that campus, you're 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 gonna receive alert looks like this, and you're gonna zoom in. And you're gonna see more detail. Of who it is, William Frisco. This is where he is, says where he is as well. But it shows on a map and you can pinch and zoom and move around, and then it says. Here's some nearby assets if you need them. If you want to see assets throughout the whole campus, you could just click the all asset button. It'll show you assets throughout the whole campus.
Okay, and then in regards to lockdowns. I I this may have already been answered in the last slide that you had before this. If I if I now I'm a teacher and I'm triggering a lockdown. Does law enforcement is not necessarily contacted at that point or?
Uh it is, it is, uh we highly recommend that they're automatically notified immediately. We do have some clients who prefer to have an intermediary. And they're not directly notified and but. The person who's responsible for notifying them is directly notified. It's completely customizable to your workflow. But we highly recommend that we built that electronic connection to your local law enforcement for each and every school.
And so I guess I would ask you to respond from the perspective of best practices, but then I'll ask staff to respond to how that would play out here locally. Uh I'm just, I I just, I can foresee scenarios where. We have a a staff member who who sees a certain situation as as a lockdown, so trigger triggers a lockdown. And and law enforcement is contacted. But maybe this is not a, this isn't a lockdown worthy scenario. I I I suppose it's, of course, it's better to be safe than sorry in these in these situations. But yeah, I guess from best practices standpoint, what 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 have we seen happen across the the country with these services? And and is that something that we thought about, whether it's with with the training or understanding of of when to trigger or or not to trigger a lockdown?
Yeah, very, very insightful question. So. The the way that you're gonna approach this is we're gonna work when we implement you, we're gonna work with your current protocols with your district safety team. So you have protocols set up for all the different lockdown scenarios, and then you have also protocols set for medical. And for other uh i- issues that are happening within the campus. And we're gonna work with your team to define which ones of those belong. It's a staff alert, the three click alert. Which ones belong, it will be programmed as a specific lockdown type. And uh I'll put you through that again. And I'm showing you four lockdown types here, but this is completely customizable to all your scenarios. So some people have seven, um most people I'd say have four or five. But we're gonna, we're gonna work with you to define which ones, and then we're gonna create training. Uh that's to that, you already have training to your protocols, but we're gonna. Take that training and then turn it into how crisis alert is gonna work with that. And when we install, we're gonna come out and install your physical sensors, and we're gonna build those integrations to the P A systems and do all the setup. We're also, once that's all completed, we actually do send a trainer to each and every school. And we work with creating that curriculum with your district so that we're training to your protocols. And training to the crisis alert execution of those. So each and every principal and and their support staff will be trained. On all the staff alerts as well as the lockdown alerts. So when our when our trainer leaves, they'll have a completely operating system that works on your protocols.
And then from a staff perspective, um the idea is always to be um better safe on the safer side. Um but just like we did with our Blackwater agreement, um we partnered with Azusa P D um to get their input and the same thing we did with our cameras. So this will be another partnership where we'll get their input and feedback on how we should roll this out.
Okay, now that's helpful here because I look at this and I see that there are some nuanced response. Kind of levels or or thresholds. But again, just for clarity. I, as a teacher, I click eight times, it's just going to the red. There there's no. Uh I I'm not able to trigger a nuanced response or a nuanced alert. It's 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 either. It's either the uh I need assistance in my location or lockdown. Correct?
Correct, yeah, because that's a little too much for a staff member to to manage. So you want your safety team to make that decision. The reason why uh we have a button alert, now you can decide as a district. That you want a button alerts to not go immediately to a lockdown, that you wanted to just alert somebody. To do that, but that is generally not a good best practice. Um and this has been proven out in states like Florida and Georgia and. Other areas that we've been, you know, installed for over five years now. And in some states, it's actually mandated by law. That every staff member has the ability to request a lockdown immediately because the challenge and. The statistics show the faster you go to lockdown, the safer. And the the situation's gonna be and the better the outcome for more people. So that's why a lot of best practices are let's lock down as fast as we possible. And then if we need a nuance, move that to a different type of lockdown. Or to an all clear because it was a false alarm, you can do that very quickly and comprehensively. Because we're integrated again to your auditory and your visual notifications throughout the entire campus.
Now, I would just be interested to hear if if we're we're seeking um. Kind of the perspective of our law enforcement agencies, I'd be interested to hear what what they have to say and and what they suggest that we do.
Yeah. You're welcome. It's it's very configurable, so uh you know, your process now also could differ by by school. Uh we do have some rural areas that have different law enforcement capabilities, so they may choose some different mechanisms to communicate with them. Uh versus a certain area. Some districts have four or five, uh our schools have four or five law enforcement agencies. So your neighbor there, Covina, I I've been working with them, they you know, they're. They have some that uh one side of the school is certified, one this law agency and the other one's the other. And and we work with multiple agencies, so the system has the capability to help help make that a a more efficient process.
And my questions are, um. Can you tell me what districts in California that has this um has a T J at this time?
Yeah, we're in over twenty districts in California. Uh we're in over, you know, three thousand across the country. Um so yeah, there's Covina is the nearest one near you, Linwood. Uh it's pretty close to you. Uh C R C N's a little bit north of you. But uh you we we provide a list to your to your uh to your leadership team. And and that I'm sure they could share that with you.
And and also, um I know you met you did speak about the battery life and does it have a um. Code or that's letting you know that the battery is dying out just in case. I I know you said you monitor it, but you know, what if? You know, people change jobs, there's different people. Is your company owned that monitors the battery life or?
Yeah, we we monitor it and you have visibility to it as well. Uh but yeah, we monitor it. And uh so it and we don't, we don't play, we're it's a five-year battery, right? So we're not playing it down to. To the fourth year and the three hundred sixtieth day. So they're gonna get changed out quite a bit before there's any opportunity for it to die. And if it does, you're completely notified immediately. So um you're gonna see, but you're gonna get a warning before it it ever gets to that point.
And and then also the commander screen, is that at the district office or is that at each school site or where is the screen at that? They know what's going on in their school.
So control is available. Yeah, yeah, this is the control screen and then the uh. The command center screens are also available at both. So we have the concept of responder teams. So each and every type of response for each and every school. Um we'll have a team that's assigned to it. And that team is typically within the school for staff alerts or localized alerts that are not requiring EMS or. But if it is a lockdown scenario or campus wide scenario, those responder teams can be larger than the campus, right? There's not, it's gonna include. Folks at the district office. Uh we were just at a um at the um. Uh I wasn't there, but my boss and some of our marketing folks were at the superintendent conference. Uh and superintendents are on the lockdown list at a lot of the schools for the the response teams. They wanna know a lockdown immediately and what's happening. And we could hear in the meetings our unique tone, which is kind of like an amber alert tone that takes over their phones. That their school's getting, they have a school getting locked down. That superintendent got up and walked out of the meeting. And it kind of. And it kind of makes you proud. It's not happy to hear that they're getting in a lockdown, but that they're right on it, right? They're, that they're knowing within three to five seconds of what's happening. So it's, it's, it's something that's, it's very powerful.
And, and the question is probably for my staff regarding, uh, who would be checking them out? They check out through the district or through each individual school site? You know, and then if someone leaves or retire or quits or whatever, who, who's monitoring that we get them back and, and all that? Yeah, so that would be a bit of myself, but.
Sure.
I'll take that one, Ken.
Go for it.
All right. Um, so yes, that'd be one of the protocols, um, part of our implementation plan that we'll be partnering to make sure everyone understands what that protocol is. Same thing with our, do with our district keys. Um, so it wouldn't be so much of a sign-out process, but we'll make sure we understand who has a badge. And then, um, when a person is leaving the district, that'd be part of the, um, offboarding process and a new hire, that'd become a part of our onboarding process.
So I also heard him say, so if someone left, would you say and took it? You could, um, yeah, deactivate it, right? So then that person cannot use it anywhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it would be useless anywhere. Um, and then i- if we are gonna integrate to your HR system through, act, you know, the, the IT department will connect. So we're, when somebody does leave, you typically, uh, there's a point like that happens where everything's turned off. And that's typically when the badge is turned off as well. Um, so we can automate that, but it also can be turned off by, uh, you know, HR or the, the front office at the, at each and every school. They have complete control to turn, turn the badges off.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Bo. I have two, I have two questions. One is, does carrying the badge allow the district to know my location when I'm on campus? Absent of me pressing the alarm?
Very good question. We get that a lot. You're gonna have that privacy question. Absolutely not. It's purposely designed to not be tracked for two reasons. One, there's a privacy issue, both, both person, could be a person's personal or it could be a union that has an issue with privacy as well. So that is critical, does not track you. Only tracks you when you push the button and you're opting in to be tracked it. You, you wanna be tracked, right? You want the help. So uh, it only tracks and it tracks for the, the, the amount of time for the incident.
Thank you. And my second question is for cabinet. I know we're spending, I think, more time on the lockdown scenario. However, in the, one of the slides, it showed that the highest incidence of a staff member asking for assistance was probably a behavior or classroom management issue. How do we currently support our teachers and staff when they need assistance with a student? For whatever reason?
Yeah, right now, right now would be a phone, walkie-talkie, a buddy. And so as Ken has pointed out, uh, sometimes that could be time-consuming or, you know, take a while. Uh, call the front office would be another, another way of, of getting assistance.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, um, can I have a motion? I move to approve fourteen point one. Motion by, um, Board Member Bo, do I have a second? Second, we just had a discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can my colleagues please place a vote? I'm sorry, student preferential vote? Thank you. Motion passes for, um, yes and one absent. Moving on to items fifteen point one, presentation of California Employees Association, CSCA sunshine proposal for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year negotiations with the Azusa Unified School District, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Board President, President Rodriguez Pena. I, um, for you is the presentation of the CSCA um, sunshine proposal. This is a required step in the negotiations process whereby we, um, are required to let the public know that we will be beginning the negotiations process. What follows this item is a hearing, uh, which is also a part of the required steps.
Now, moving on to item fifteen point two, public hearing of California School Employees Association, CSCA sunshine proposal for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year negotiations with the Azusa Unified School District. Colleagues, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Greer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by, uh, Board Member Bo, student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes for yes and one absent. The public hearing is now open at nine forty-four PM. Does anyone wish to make a public comment on this agenda item? The public the public hearing is now closed at nine forty-five PM. Moving on to item fifteen point three, presentation of Azusa Unified School District sunshine proposal for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year with the California School Employees Association, CSCA. Mr. O'Neal, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Rodriguez Pena. Similarly, this item is the district's um, proposal for negotiations. So this is the articles that the district will be, um, negotiating with CSCA. And as I stated previously, this is a required step in the negotiations process.
Thank you. Moving on to item fifteen point four, public hearing Azusa Unified School District sunshine proposal for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year negotiations with California School Employees Association, CSCA. Colleagues, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to approve fifteen point four public hearing.
Make motion by, um, motion by, uh, Board Member Bo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer, student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes for yes and one absent. The public hearing is not, is now open at seven, excuse me, nine forty-six PM. Does anyone wish to make a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at nine forty-six PM. Moving on to item fifteen point five, approval of Azusa Unified School District sunshine proposal for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year with California Employees Association, CSCA. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Board Member Greer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bo, any discussion? Student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes for yes and one absent. Moving on to, um, item number sixteen point one through sixteen point seven, our amendment administrative regulation board bylaws. Board policies and exhibit brought to us for the first reading, reading. Does anyone have any questions on, on item sixteen point one through sixteen point seven?
Board President, if I may, I would like to point out that, um, item sixteen point three, uh, which is the, uh, board policies and administrative regulations relating to personnel. Um, there is a list of thirty, uh, um, different board policies and, and, uh, administrative regulations. The very last item is, uh, there in air. Um, it's a repeat of an earlier item. What should have been placed, um, in that item is, uh, board policy forty-three, uh, five-four. Uh, so we will be bringing, uh, board policy four, three, five-four to a subsequent board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is that, will that be for our first reading or for a, a second reading when it, for approval?
When we bring, uh, when we bring, uh, board policy forty-three, five-four, it will be for first reading because it's not on this list.
Thank you. Moving on to item seventeen point one, adjournment, can I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Greer, second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Benavides, any discussion? Colleagues, please place your vote. Meeting is adjourned at nine forty-nine PM, and I'd like to close in memory of Aldo Ramirez. If we can please take a minute in memory of Aldo Ramirez student at Azusa High School. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. We are not, now adjourned.